Tonight's Noblesville Common Council meeting for Tuesday, September 29th to order. Pledge of allegiance, Mr. Davis, will you leave this mat, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, united in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and welcome, everybody. Glad to have you here tonight. Start the roll call, Ms. Leece.
Mr. Ayer.
President.
Mr. Boyce.
President.
Mr. Davis.
President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
President.
Mr. Smith.
President.
Ms. Wiles.
President.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Leece. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the September 15th meeting. Move to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Now the approval of the minutes for the special session on September 19th. Move to approve?
Second.
And a second, also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. An approval of tonight's agenda. Move to approve?
Second.
Approved and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, right hand, please. Next is the petitions or comments by citizens. I don't have any here in front of me. Again, if you do want to make a comment or have a question, there are forms just outside the doors in the hallway, but I will recognize our mayor, Chris Jensen, at this point. I think he has some comments he would like to make at this time, I think. Cheer up, Mr. Jensen.
Sorry. It wasn't even done taking my notes. Yeah, sorry. Mr. President, members of council, thank you. For just a few minutes, I would like to just go over with a few topics, all financial related, which is a great theme for this evening's meeting. I'll be up later to introduce the budget in front of you for final passage, but I wanted to bring to your attention two things that we've already communicated, I believe, with you via email, and just want to go on the record to discuss. First of all, the 2021 distribution. As you know, we are heavily funded through the local income tax distribution that's distributed to the counties and distributed out to municipalities and different taxing units within the county. Every year, the state of Indiana gives us a projection of what our lit revenues are going to be in order to budget off of for 2021. As you may recall, the governor did extend the tax deadline by several months as part of the executive order for the COVID-19 global pandemic. So when we received our projection from the state, which was prior to finalizing our budget, they projected that Noblesville will receive a 9% reduction in our lit distribution for 2021. Because of the financial savvy of Jeff Spalding and Mike Reuter and others, we felt like that number was a bit on the pessimistic side. So our budget that was presented to you back really in August was based off of a 2% reduction of lit revenues. We felt like that was a more realistic number to go with. As you may have seen or read or heard in the past several weeks, the state certified final distributions for 2021 that actually showed a 12% increase in our lit distributions. And at first, everyone was very excited. I personally thought we need to probably fire someone because of the projections there to be off that much. And of course, what we all thought was probably too good to be true was in fact too good to be true. And after some digging by Mr. Spalding and others, we found out that that was really, instead of a normal 12-month distribution, was in fact a 14-month distribution, thus the 12% increase. So if you back out the two additional months there, it actually comes about a 2% reduction. So kudos to our team, in fact, for basing that budget on a 2% reduction. I bring that to your attention just because I want to make sure that we are very transparent and honest about our current budget situation. I want the public to know that what looks like a 12% increase during a global downturn is in fact a 2% reduction, and I'm very proud of the budget thus that we submitted to you for consideration tonight. I think it's very important to know that while we have some additional funding in front of us today, that we continue to hold fiscal restraint, which I think this body probably agrees with, knowing that at some point in time, we'll have a 10-month distribution and all will be right in the world once again. So our plan is to hold on to those funds, knowing that our biggest impact with COVID-related expenses will come in 2022, and so we'll budget for that accordingly. But I just wanted to go on the record, I know I've talked with most of you individually, felt like it was important, though, to the public to go on record as kind of stating that is the circumstances around the lit distribution. The second item I want to talk to you, which is a little bit more in the weeds, is our CARES Act funding that we have received. I know President Hampton actually asked me a few weeks ago the status of our CARES Act distribution. So Indiana was one of, not every state there, in fact, 26 states who received CARES Act funding from the federal government did not allot funding for local municipalities. Indiana did, which I thoroughly appreciate. I know you all would join me in thanking the governor and the administration for setting aside $300 million for local municipal funding. Of that, our bucket was about a $2 million bucket to be used for reimbursement of COVID-related costs, which was appreciated. However, the state of Indiana, when it was first administered, put on an even more stricter set of restrictions than our friends in Washington did on our reimbursement and what we were able to be reimbursed. So we have been really combing the last several weeks through trying to get to our $2 million allotment number. I'm proud to say we have met with many legislative leaders over the past several weeks, kind of to just explain the situation. I know, Will, you asked me, you know, why haven't we gotten all of our dollars? It's because we're simply unable with the restrictions that were put on. We received a letter two days ago from the Indiana Finance Authority, which is administering this program, that really greatly lifted many of the restrictions around public safety reimbursement, around the Small Business Resilience Grant Program that you all certified in late March, early April. So all of those now will be able to be reimbursed through this program. So I just appreciate all of your support. I know many of you have reached out to local legislators to voice your support for that. Again, we were not asking for additional funding. We were simply asking to be able to use the money that was set aside for us to use going forward. So I appreciate Deputy Mayor Matt Light and others who were diligently monitoring that situation and helping putting pressure on our friends, both at 200 West Washington Street in Indianapolis and at the United States Capitol in DC, to make that happen. So both, I think, really good news and just some clarifying points that I wanted to make for you tonight going forward. So if you have any questions, please feel free to let me know.
Questions from Mayor Jensen? We probably could ask whenever we get into the budget.
That's perfect. I'll look forward to that. Thank you.
Next up, we have council committee reports. I believe, Mr. Ayer, do we have a roach?
We do, and it predominantly is going to be the same as the one I gave a month ago. So I'm just going to email that out to everybody. Really no updates of any, no writing that need to be go through.
Continued work on a lot of the same projects.
Pretty much, there's no new projects in there, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other committee reports other than finance? I'm not sure. I don't think there is, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met September 24th. One of the primary discussion items was East-West Corridor expense reimbursement resolution, which I believe is in our packets for consideration this evening. As you know, the East-West Corridor is one of our priority projects, and we've appropriated somewhere in the zone of $2 million for design costs and other costs. Given the structure of these bonds, which will likely be lease rental bonds, we want to be able to put ourselves in a position where we can potentially recapture some of the costs that we front-end loaded for design work related to the project and other costs related there, too. So this comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee. Mr. Howard will probably expound on some of the additional details. We talked to some degree about internal controls. We know the SBOA comes in annually, doesn't audit. I think to this point, we've done a really good job of maintaining controls internally, but I think that, and the administration has also looked at the possibility of bringing in an outside source to help us set up some internal policies that will help us, I think, going forward, particularly in light of binding agencies that like to see internal control plans in place. That's always a feather in the cap or a nice check mark on the list that they go through. But I think more importantly, it lends more credibility to the financial side of the House and is good for the taxpayers who can rely on the fact that we are following some well-defined internal controls. So more news on that, although I believe we have engaged pro-global to do the internal control work for us. So I think that's an important part of what we do from an auditing perspective longer term. We may choose to engage an outside accounting firm to do our annual audit. It may be a little more expensive, but I think it adds some additional credibility to the numbers that we're putting out to the public, particularly if we're going to be in the bond market, which we will be for the next couple of years. So the lit distribution was another topic of conversation, but the mayor so eloquently covered that that I will skip that portion. And the claims come to you with a favorable recommendation. And I think that was the gist of the meeting. So, Mr. President, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. O'Connor at all? So you said it came, claims favorable. Do we have a motion on this claim?
President, I would move to approve the claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Previously discussed ordinances. We've got quite a few of them here tonight. We start with number 2409-20. Council to consider ordinance number 24-09-20 and ordinance annexing 15811 Bowden Road. Ms. Yelton.
Good evening. This is a 48th parcel, again, that's located at the northwest corner of 156th Street and Bowden Road. It is for the eventual construction of a elementary school for the Hamilton Southeastern School District. This annexation, again, will be, eventually, they will hook into our sanitary sewer system, so that is one of the main reasons for this annexation. It is adjacent to all areas of the city limits except for the property that is immediately to the west of it. And that property, immediately to the west of it, does have an annexation application on file, which I will be bringing through the process before the end of the year. As you may recall, at the last meeting, you did adopt the resolution for the fiscal analysis of this property, so we are asking that this property be annexed into the city. And with that, I will ask if you have any questions. If not, there are representatives here that could speak to it if you so desire.
Any questions? Representatives want to speak now, or there's a couple more issues coming up later that perhaps they are?
Yep.
So.
Mr. President, I would move to approve ordinance 240920.
Second.
We have a motion to approve ordinance number 24-09-20 and a second. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Leece.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Leece. Next item, number 25-09-20. The council to consider ordinance number 25-09-20 and ordinance adopting the 2021 operating budget. Mayor Jensen.
Good evening again. First of all, Mr. O'Connor, that was the nicest compliment I could have gotten earlier by you, by the way. Thank you so much. I know I'm treading into your territory, but it means a lot that I'm halfway making sense, so I give you a lot of credit for what you've taught me. So I rise tonight to give you a final introduction of a budget and thank you for your patience with us as we've gone through this process the last several months. Obviously, first year of an administration, middle of a global pandemic, great time to put together an $80 million budget. And I wanted to rise tonight to give you, what I stated several weeks ago, were our forward guiding, my forward guiding principles on the 2021 budget, which was, in the midst of all this, was to flatline the 2021 budget as it relates to 2020. We will be seeing no additional salary increases, no salary increases at all in 2021. We'll also have no healthcare premium increases in 2021, as well as no additional city employees in 2021, other than ones previously budgeted for the Noble Act program in our Public Safety Department. So those were forward guiding principles that I thought made sense for this year's budget that we presented to you several weeks ago. I want to thank City Controller Jeff Spalding, as well as Deputy Mayor Matt Light, who were live-eating and breathing this. I can tell you that flatlining a budget in a city of 65,000 individuals that is growing and excited to invest in its future is not easy. And there were a lot of department heads that came together to look at needs and wants and prioritization. You all were involved in that in many, many ways, so I just wanted to offer my sincere thank you to you all for your willingness to engage with us in this conversation, to get us to this point. I look forward to better days ahead with a better financial future. I know that we have all talked openly about reevaluating this in 2021 to see what our financial picture looks like. I think that's only fair to the residents of Noblesville. We are making the best decisions possible for the taxpayers of Noblesville with the information that we have today. But as I alluded to several minutes ago, that information can be in flux, and we'll look forward to hoping that comes back with even better news in 2021, and we're happy to revisit this conversation with you at that point in time. So at this point in time, Jeff Spalding is going to kind of walk you quickly through the resolution, then either one of us would be happy to answer any questions that you have. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller, and as the mayor mentioned, I'm just up here to kind of do the perfunctory aspect of dealing with the ordinance. First of all, as you'll recall, at the last meeting, we introduced the budget, went through the, you know, fairly detailed presentation of the elements that are in it, so, you know, we'll spare you that tonight. One thing, though, to remind you, and this was handed out, you do have a copy of the 2020 Civil City Budget Adopted Overview and Highlights. You've seen this before. Nothing has changed since introduction, other than the document now says it's adopted. So that's a resource that you have available that, you know, tries to give you some ability to, you know, dig behind the higher level numbers and answer certain questions. And then finally, the, and that got emailed to you as well. And then finally, the ordinance, the specific ordinance that we use here in the city of Noblesville is actually generated from the state's gateway system, and as we talked about at that last meeting, that ordinance has on it both the adopted budget appropriation amounts, which represent the numbers that we talk about here, except for one small quirk about the way that DLGF requires you to report certain transfers. And then the other amounts on there are the adopted levy and tax rate, and those amounts, as we talked about before, actually end up being higher than what will actually be implemented when we execute the final approval of the levies and tax rates with the DLGF at the end of the year. So again, if you just have any questions about that, those numbers are higher than what will actually get executed. And then finally, there's an item on the agenda later this evening that directs me as the controller to, when I work with the DLGF, to finalize those levies and tax rates, to set a tax rate no higher than the $10 maximum limitation that you all have identified. And so that addresses that issue. So if you have any questions about the adopted budget, I'm happy to take them, or.
Questions at all? I had one that came up earlier. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Connor. Well, when we were talking earlier, we talked about with kind of the late game lit distribution and the CARES Act money, was there a consideration at all from the administration as potential raises, you know, across the board for maybe not everyone, but, you know?
Let the mayor speak to that. Okay. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I think your point is very well taken, you know, and knowing, no incoming mayor wants to give direction of no raises in his first year, but I think, I think in the next six months, we will have a better picture of what our fiscal situation is when it comes to actual distributions and knowing what our tax situation is. So we would be happy to come back to the council early next year or midway through next year to kind of evaluate what those numbers look like and have discussions with you about what that could look like in terms of raises going forward, or be ready at least to implement them in 2022 if that fiscal picture does, in fact, look better. But we felt like at this time, with what we know, the best decision that we would recommend would be to hold the line.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connor, will you? Did you have one for? He keeps passing.
I was just going to talk on about the CARES, about the CARES Act money. That's really reimbursing.
Correct. That, yes.
Money for salaries. That's the reimbursement. That's already.
That's a very valid point. That is not new money, to your point. That is reimbursable dollars, but for COVID, we would not have those expenses. A lot of that will go to additional EMS runs that we had early on. It will go to the Small Business Resilience Grant Program that you had, that you helped implement back in March and April, so those were reimbursable dollars. We're looking forward to hopefully having a conversation with our friends in Washington, DC going forward about some revenue replacement opportunities, but we have yet to, well, we, I'm not going to blame us, Congress has yet to quite figure that out. So we look forward to having that conversation.
I suppose to add on to that, we're just too uncertain on what's going to happen with the 22 distribution, because it's 10 months, not 12. I mean, you can do some estimates and try to come up with what is that number going to be, but I think it's the right approach to take a conservative view of it, see what the numbers tell us, and I don't think any of us want to not be willing to provide raises for employees, but in this moment in time, I think I'd rather see the number before we commit and then find out, well, boy, that wasn't the right thing to do. At this point, it may be something we can look at, and it may be more of a 22, and instead of doing 2%, you do 4%, or whatever the numbers will tell us, but, so I would support where the mayor is with this. I think it makes sense.
And to Councilor O'Connor's point, too, as you may recall, in previous years, when I had the luxury of being on that side of the table as well, we may have given, I think, in several years before, a 4% raise, but really 2% of that was going to cover our health insurance premium raises, increased costs. So while there isn't a direct paycheck raise for employees in 2021, there is. So while there isn't a direct paycheck raise for employees in 2021, there is no hit when it comes to the health insurance. So I think that is a fair trade at this point in time and a big savings to our employees.
I mean, I hate, I agree. I hate not giving raises to anyone. I think that's always, is no fun to do from any of our standpoints, especially, like you said, for mayor coming right in. However, but I also look at, you know, government sector and private sector are very different, as we always say. But I know very few people in the private sectors that are looking at raises coming this year. I mean, most people are seeing cut, saw cuts for quite a while, and maybe are getting that back now. So I think we, I think it is prudent to be conservative here and see what happens, and hopefully we can make some better decisions, some easier decisions and more fun decisions.
And we said from the outset, our number one goal was to keep our employees employed. And I think, I think you all would share that mission as well, so.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Just a comment.
Yes.
I wanted to publicly thank Mr. Spalding, Mr. Barris, and certainly the administration's Finance Chair. They've made my job with this budget fairly simple. So we've had several discussions amongst all of us. We've had some side conversations about different things, but they've done a terrific job putting together all this data, I think, in a, you know, from a public perspective. This is all, all the information's here. It's well thought out, and I think it's transparent and really paints a picture. And I think that's where we're really trying to go with this, from current and then going forward with strong historical data, we can really paint a picture for the public. And I think that's the important thing that we're really after. But, so thanks for all your work and effort. Most appreciated. And we'll see where we go in '21 and hope for better times ahead here from an economic standpoint.
Sounds like a motion to me. You going to make a motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 25-09-20, council, an ordinance adopting the 2021 operating budget.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 25-09-20. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Lee's. Thank you, council. We had a lot of extra meetings on this, and thank you, council, for doing what you do. Next up, item number 26-09-20. Council to consider ordinance number 26-09-20 a salary ordinance for appointed officials and employees of the city of Noblesville for 2021. Ms. Ramon.
Good evening. Holly Ramon, Human Resources Director. As discussed during our last meeting, before you is the 2021 salary ordinance that you had discussed with the, during the budget sessions with the various departments. And the only change that I do have from our last meeting is on page five under section 12. In this section, it describes the utility and the reimbursement to the civil city for certain positions. Under the GIS positions, they no longer are under the IT department. They're under planning and development. So that update was made to the new original, or the clean copies I gave to Clerk Lee's. Thank you.
Question? Yeah, Mr.?
I think we need to amend the ordinance prior to passing. Well, I will make a motion that we amend ordinance 26-09-20 with the changes just articulated by our Human Resources Director, I believe in section 12 on page five. Everything else as is.
Second on that.
Second.
So this is a hand vote, right, Ms. Lee's, to approve, to amend the ordinance 26-09-20? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. So the ordinance is amended.
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 26-09-20 as amended salary ordinance for the appointed officials and employees of the city of Noblesville for 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 26-09-20 as amended. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is number 27-09-20. Council to consider ordinance number 27-09-20 a salary ordinance for elected officials for the city of Noblesville. Ms. Lee's.
There have been no changes since last year and since the first reading.
No raises here either.
Mr. President?
Mr. Peterson?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 27-09-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 27-09-20. Roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Lee's. Next up, number 31-09-20. Council to consider ordinance number 31-09-20 an ordinance for special consideration for a vehicle service facility, belt tire, within the Terry Lee Crossing Plan Development north of TLC Way and east of State Road 37. Ms. Yeldon.
As you may recall, the last meeting this was introduced. Again, it is a, an approximately two acre site that is located at TLC Way and Terry Lee Crossing. It has no access directly onto State Road 37. This would be the Collo Jeep dealership. This is the Hyundai dealership of Terry Lee. And this here would be actually the inline building that is adjacent to Cherry Street. This is a request for an automobile service use to be allowed in the Terry Lee Crossing Plan Development. All, I'm going to say, in most of our UDO commercial, in most of the UDO, the, the commercial districts require a public hearing for an automobile-related use, and this is, happens to be an automobile-related use. This is their, again, proposed site plan. Again, this would be Terry Lee Crossing. State Road 37 would be in this area, bottom to the west TLC Boulevard. As you may recall, this is basically the elevations that they have proposed, very similar to the, very similar, exactly the same, actually, to the one that they proposed in the Saxon Corporate Campus, basically off of State Road, off of the interstate. Again, this property does contain approximately two acres. It did come to you with a favorable recommendation for adoption from the Plan Commission. And with that, I will ask if you have any questions of staff.
Petitioner is here, right?
Yes. He's in the audience.
Up to you if you want to say anymore.
I'm fine unless you've got any questions.
You guys have any questions for him? No?
Mr. President, I would move to approve ordinance 31-09-20.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 31-09-20. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is adopted.
All right. Council to consider ordinance number 32-09-20, an ordinance for a change of zoning from A2 county zoning to R1 single-family residential for 40 acres north of 156th Street and west of Bowden Road. Ms. Yeldon.
Do we all...
President, you want to read these together?
Oh, yeah, we have a second one. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. And also number 33-09-20. Council to consider ordinance number 33-09-20, an ordinance for a change of zoning from R1 single-family residential to R1/GUO government use overlay for the construction of an elementary school for Hamilton Southeastern School District, 40 acres north of 156th Street and west of Bowden Road. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. Again, this is the piece of property at Bowden Road and 156th Street that we just previously talked about during the annexation, which was the first item on the agenda. Again, this is for a proposed elementary school. This is a, basically, their site plan. As you can see, the school is, is here. Their parking is here. They will have two drive accesses off of 156th Street and no access off of Bowden Road. This is their proposed landscaping plan. As you can see, there is plantings basically around. There are no plantings adjacent to the building, and there is limited plantings within the parking lot. This right here is basically their proposed elevations of the school building, given you all four sides. Again, this proposed project would have a, a government use overlay, which is very typical, typical for any schools that we have, basically any properties that are either owned by the county or the city. Waivers were granted by the Plan Commission that included building height, the landscaping, again, around the building that would typically be required, also the same for the parking lot, the elimination of street tree requirements, and the allowance for two drives along a primary arterial, which is, again, 156th Street. The change of zoning from the county zoning would go to R1, and then the government use overlay would be basically an overlay district on top of it. Again, this came to you with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission for adoption on both of these proposed ordinances.
Any questions? Mr. Peterson?
Ms. Yeldon, prior to the issuance of any building or improvement location permits, will the dedication of the right-of-way and relocation utilities be pursuant to the requirements of the UDO?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
The, Ms. Yeldon, you referred to the property to the west as, and there is an annexation that has been filed on that part?
Yes, yes. Actually, it was, it was, yes, it has been filed for this. I think it's 10 acres. It's either 10 or 12 acres.
I'm assuming that's going to be residential use?
Yes, this is a residential use currently. Basically, what happened was they hooked into our sanitary sewer system, so they are required to basically come into the city limits.
And I think some of the landscaping request, some of it's based on safety, is not...
That is correct. These are the same basic, we allow the same eliminations for the Noblesville schools also. You know, obviously, up around the building, we typically require a lot of shrubs. Those shrubs have to be a minimum of 24 inches in height. You know, some of them could grow to, let's say, three or four inches in height. You know, the one thing that you don't want is somebody hiding behind those, you know, either before, after, or during school hours. So the same thing with the parking lot. There, there is some landscaping. We allow the elimination of a lot of the shrubs within the parking lot also.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Ms. Yeldon? Petitioner is here, right? I believe he is.
That is correct.
Good evening, council members. David Day, General Counsel to the Hamilton Southeastern Schools. I have Dr. Borth, the Superintendent of Schools. We'd be happy to answer any questions, and I believe Dr. Borth would like the privilege of a couple of remarks. I don't think he's ever addressed the Noblesville Common Council before.
Well, we wouldn't want to come all this way and make some wrong turns.
I do bring greetings from the Hamilton Southeastern Schools, and we're very pleased, proud to be bringing this, this project to you for your approval on these ordinances. We think that this project is going to make you proud. We're looking forward to that time when we can invite all of you for the dedication of this facility. It's going to be a while from now, but fall, late summer of 2022, we look forward to that. It'll be a school for around 700 students, and we think that that building will be at full capacity the day it opens. So I'm here for, to entertain your questions.
Thank you very much for being here. Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. President, Doctor, thanks for being here. Just a question from a demographic perspective. What are your numbers telling you about growth in the school population? And you mentioned the building's going to be at capacity, but at some point, are you seeing a trend down or trend up? Or what are the, what are the statisticians telling you?
The statisticians have been incorrect. Just, just slightly incorrect. We were told that we would be seeing a plateauing of our student enrollment, and that should have begun in about 2019. Didn't happen. We've been growing since. Now, this year, because of COVID-19, we are seeing a dip in our enrollment. We know that we have around 300 kindergarten students who, whose parents have chosen either private options or homeschooling. And so, but we also know that they are waiting until first grade to make their decision to come back, and we look for this to be a blip. But we have roughly 22,000 students, and we were supposed to have just shy of 21,000 by this time, according to the demographers. Now, there's a lot of construction and a lot of homes in the southeast corner of our district, more than we had anticipated, and, and producing more students than we had anticipated. Southeastern Elementary, which is our brand-new, well, not brand-new, but it's our newest school, is overcapacity. In fact, we're bringing one more portable classroom to that building. It already has four portable classrooms. And this new elementary in Wayne Township will relieve some of the pressure of Southeastern Elementary School, Thorpe Creek School, and Geist Elementary. We aren't sure what to, what to think in terms of projecting our, our numbers for Wayne Township, but we also know that there could be considerable numbers there, and we are not abandoning Durbin Elementary. Durbin Elementary will be a relief valve for us in the event that we need to increase our capacity to serve elementary students in that building. In fact, we're, we're continuing to use that building, but the programs that we will be putting there could be relocated to other facilities. So we're very optimistic. We have also another 160-some acres in Wayne Township, should there be need for that kind of expansion at another point. I think that's a little beyond my tenure, but who knows?
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
With this one opening at capacity, Doctor, do you anticipate portable classrooms all having to be there right away when this opens?
This, this should relieve us of the need for portable classrooms. This, this should relieve us of the need for portable classrooms. I don't anticipate having portable classrooms there. In fact, I have advocated getting rid of portable classrooms, period, across our district. We just haven't been able to move as quickly as I would like. We have 20, 20 portable classrooms in use right now, 20-some. It had been almost 40 a few years ago, so we're slowly but surely eliminating the need for that. That's a stopgap approach, and we're only leasing those now instead of purchasing those.
Well, if you, in looking at those plans, it looks like it's a single-story structure.
Two-story.
It is a two-story structure.
Yeah.
Okay. Question was, could you do it as a two-story structure? And then we need, sorry. And just, as I said this at the last meeting, for those who were watching online or may have questions, why Hamilton Southeastern Schools is coming to Noblesville City Council asking for approval? The school district boundary lines, there are residents of Noblesville who attend HSE schools, so anything that's east of somewhere around those students that attend HSE schools.
That's right, including two Borof children, grandchildren of mine.
Noblesville coaching staffs will be allowed to recruit at this facility.
They do now.
Any other questions? Thank you, Doctor. Thank you, David.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
I was looking at your closing ordinance and referring to you got 09-20 as well as ordinance number 33-09-20.
Second. Second. We have a motion to approve ordinances number 32-09-20 and number 33-09-20 and a second. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinances are adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to miscellaneous number one, counsel to consider resolution RC-39-20 a resolution establishing the maximum civil city property tax rate for 2021 and authorizing the Controller to request the rate be approved by the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance. Mr. Spalding.
Mr. President, members of the council, again, Jeff Spalding, Controller and CFO, and this was the item I referenced earlier, and this is the, actually, the second year that we've done this same process, which is basically via this resolution, you directing me with my future interactions with the State Department of Local Government Finance to make whatever decisions have to be made within the context of the ordinance that you adopted earlier to ensure that our total property tax rate for the city of Noblesville is not, does not exceed $1.10. And with that direction, that's what I'll do.
Any questions? Any questions, Mr. Spalding?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Make a motion that we approve miscellaneous number one, resolution establishing maximum city, civil city property tax.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution RC-39-20. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. There is. Thank you, Mr. Spalding.
Thank you.
Miscellaneous number two, counsel to consider resolution RC-40-20 a reimbursement resolution permitting reimbursement of project costs, the East-West Corridor project. Mr. Howard.
Yes, this resolution comes to you as probably the first in a very long line of approvals for the East-West Corridor project. As Mr. O'Connor pointed out earlier, this is the number one priority of the mayor and this administration to make this project, it's been talked about for 30 years, to move forward. To do that, not only will there be construction challenges, but there will be financial challenges. And one of those challenges is that when you get a complex financing, you lose some flexibility one place, you gain it another. This resolution allows you to appropriate funds from your existing cash or any funds that are eligible for road purposes and to subsequently reimburse yourself from long-term financing. Obviously, this project will be a long-term capital project. It'll be funded that way, and how we move down that road, the administration is still working diligently to try to provide more detail. This ordinance allows you, you've already appropriated some funds, and in subsequent months, you'll be approached for more funds to work in design and basically decide, decide how this project's going to work and what the schedule is. This resolution allows you to reimburse yourself from bond proceeds from a lease rental project, but does not mandate you to do it. However, if you don't pass this resolution, any cash you put in, you would not be able to reimburse. So this is, just gives the administration and you as a council another tool to move forward until we get further down the road and, and have more clear vision of how we're going to proceed on this very, very important project. With that, I'll stop and answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Howard?
I would move, well, you're looking at number two, RC-40-20.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution RC-40-20. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Final item on the agenda, our council comments. Anyone with the good of the cause. I just wanted to say we lost K-9 Bonnie this last week, and just thoughts with Patrolman Alex Lynn and, and the entire police force, its, its partner that they lost this week. So just thinking of them. Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.